Board members, we have a quorum. We have five persons who are present and two persons who are on the phone. But that does mean we have a quorum. We all have had an opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as printed? Sumo. Okay, okay. All in favor? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No nays, there being none, the motion is approved. We have all had an opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from August the 1st, 2023? Regular board meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Madam, I so move.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded. That, uh, okay, so you don't need a second.
We do.
Okay. I get a second? Yes, okay. All right. The second, Cynthia? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Now, just like that, we are at the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Hilliard. Good evening, board members and team members and all those who are with us this evening. We'll begin, as we typically do, with our video highlights reel from the instructional television.
An electrifying atmosphere as JPS faculty and students from 50 JPS schools gathered under one roof. The Callaway High School theater pattern! A celebration like no other took place at the JSU Lee E. Williams Athletics and Assembly Center for the JPS 2023-24 Convocation. Exhibiting school pride in full splendor, featuring outstanding band and dance performances. The 2023-24 Convocation reverberated the spirit of learning and the boundless potential that defines Jackson Public Schools.
We are resilient, resistant, and resolute. Again, we are champions.
You know, one of the undercover successes is the comeback of JPS.
The commencement of the 2023-24 school year marked a successful return as JPS faculty warmly welcomed scholars back to the classroom.
Ready to rock?
Ready to rock!
All JPS schools proactively guided parents and students through the enrollment process.
We're constantly, over the summer and throughout the year, rethinking our educational programs, the ways that we support scholars.
And thank you to JPS Campus Enforcement and the Jackson Police Department for greeting our scholars and staff at Lester Elementary, Key Elementary, and Chastain Middle School with a blue light parade. Officers greeted students with high fives, handshakes, and hugs. Scholars were pleasantly surprised by the excitement, and their spirits were lifted for a full day. Jackson State University and Jackson Public Schools jointly hosted an open house and signing day for the inaugural cohort of the Jackson Middle College. Comprising 17 JPS high school juniors and seniors, the first cohort will specialize in math education to address the need for math teachers and educators in JPS. The program will encompass students from all seven JPS high schools. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website at jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook at Jackson Public Schools, on Instagram at JPS Student Voices, on Twitter at JPS District, Comcast Channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at youtube.com/JPSITV.
And as always, we want to thank the instructional television team for their hard work in pulling together these highlights. Really appreciate reliving some of those moments. And as you saw, board members, we've gotten off to a really strong start with the school year. Lots of excitement, not in the least at the convocation. And I know some of you were able to make that, and others watched it and were able to catch up with us and all of that. So we had a really good time. And as we were out visiting and greeting scholars and welcoming team members back last week, our first week of school, many folks actually spoke of the convocation. So I can tell that it means a lot to our community and want to continue to provide that as a way for us to come back together at the start of the year. Just a couple of things by way of remarks this evening. And first, and it was alluded to in the video there, the board members, as you saw, Jackson Public Schools and the Jackson State University recently hosted an open house and a signing day for the inaugural cohort of the Jackson Middle College. This first cohort is comprised of 17 high school juniors and seniors who are specializing and focusing on mathematics in their studies and mathematics education to address, help us address the need for math teachers and other educators in Jackson Public Schools. At this time, I want to invite our Assistant Superintendent of High Schools, Mrs. Lachisha Marshall-Thomas, who will join us to tell us a little more about the program and to introduce some of our scholars who happen to be here with us this evening. Ms. Marshall-Thomas.
Great evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Hilliard, board members, Dr. Green. Tonight, we have the pleasure of introducing 17 outstanding scholars. And these scholars are members of the inaugural class of the Jackson Middle College. These astute, ambitious achievers will embark upon an enjoyable journey to become future math teachers through a partnership between JPS and Jackson State University. Middle colleges are innovative high school programs that work collaboratively to give underserved high school students the opportunity to access college courses and earn an associate degree or transferable college credits through, I'm sorry, with no cost to students and their families. The students will spend the next two years of high school completing both their high school courses and their college coursework in the field of math education. Afterwards, they will wrap up their last two years at the Jackson State University, completing the math ed program. These scholars will return to JPS to serve as full-time, highly qualified math educators in the fields of geometry, algebra, and seventh through 12th grade mathematics. Ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome these outstanding scholars. Our first scholar is Chloe Day. And Chloe, as you come up, I'll just, I'll give you your certificate and just remain at the front. Kaderius Johnson. Maya Nelson. Kristen Rhodes. Asia Scott. Alicia Tolliver. Charles Travis Jr. Gregory Van Buren. At this time, we also would like to invite up Ms. Rhonda Murphy-Johnson, who serves as our teacher prep educator. Our students also take a course called Teacher Prep Ed alongside their college and their high school courses. And Ms. Victoria Scantillberry, who serves as our coordinator there. Is she here? Dr. Green, will you join our scholars?
Please.
One, for making such a bold move in their career and their education. I don't know about others of us here in the room, but I certainly wasn't so sure at my, coming out of my sophomore year, because this decision had to be made in their sophomore year. I certainly wasn't so sure at that point that I was ready to commit to a particular school, a particular study, or even a commitment of where I would be working just out of college. But these young people have made that commitment, and we're so excited to be working with them. Really excited to have yet another strong, another layer, I would say, of our partnership with Jackson State University. They continue to be such strong partners and strong co-conspirators, I would say, in preparing young people in this area. So another round of applause for these young folks. Can't wait to shake their hands as they join us for new teacher orientation in a few years. I want to get ahead of myself, but it's coming. All right. One final note, board members, that I'd like to make this evening, and you'll bear with me, take a few moments just to kind of talk through this a bit. As you saw through the highlights reel here, and many of you in walks through our buildings, there's a huge buzz in our school district. There's a huge buzz and lots of energy and strength and goodwill and all sorts of things that are happening already this school year. And much of it kind of owing back to last year and the last couple of years, as we've continued to build the team and build the culture and focus on teaching and learning, focus on our children and serving them and ensuring that they have what they need. Unfortunately, that buzz, that energy, is in some ways marred and complicated by some pretty substantial facilities challenges that we've had, that we continue to have, actually, and even into the start of this school year. Unfortunately, the excitement and focus on teaching and learning has been marred by some of those challenges, and specifically challenges around our heating and cooling, our air conditioning system. And I know that some of you board members have received complaints and feedback from our parents, from perhaps scholars, community members. We've gotten calls from the Mississippi Department of Education, the Jackson Teachers Union, and others. And of course, our team members have shared concerns about air conditioning and, of course, and these record-setting hot, excessively hot days. It's all the worse, just dealing with that. And so I wanted to name that. And with the age of our buildings and the supply chain issues that we continue to deal with, the challenges in getting new boilers, not boilers, but chillers, getting new motors for chillers and many of the other parts that are needed. And with the stretched labor union, labor force, these issues are likely to continue for as long as we operate the number of buildings that we're currently operating. The AC systems are extremely fragile. Many of them in many of our schools, if not most of our schools, are beyond their life expectancy. And the repairs that we make consistently, I would dare say daily, multiple times a day, the repairs that we're making to our AC units last for only a short while. As I mentioned, parts are getting harder and harder to find for our outdated systems. And we need more funding. And the funding that we have right now, we have a window in which, and I know you all know this, but just to remind, and, you know, to stay for those who might not know this, there is a window in which we can spend these funds. And by the way, we spend and get reimbursed for them, so we also have to have the funds in hand in order to spend them and then get reimbursed by the federal government through the state government. But we need those funds. We have only a year left to expend the funds that we have. We also need time outside of school hours. And so the thought that we could do this work on the weekend, or in the evenings, or even over the summer is just wrong. It's false. And we've heard over the last several months, lots of concerns from parents and community members about co-locating schools with other schools in an effort to do some of this work. And so I'm clear that that's not ideal and that there are lots of concerns around it. But without the money to do the work and without time outside of school days, where we can open up ceilings and take the whole system offline and work in dust and maybe even asbestos and all those sorts of things that would have to be addressed in such major repair work, without that time, we would be stretched in trying to do the work that needs to be done. So, but I mentioned the schools that we're operating, the number of schools that we're operating, because while this issue has been reverberating over some time, it's coming to a head. We have, as I noted, in many of our schools, HVAC systems, heating and cooling systems, that are outdated beyond their life expectancy. It's getting to the point where we can't get the parts even to fix those. And so we need to replace them. I've just talked about the challenges with replacing them. You have to take the schools offline and have kids out of the buildings, and you have to have the parts and the expertise and all that. Running a business, because as much as we focus on teaching and learning, there is a business to running schools. And running a business, at some point, we've got to make the determination on where to best spend our dollars. Does it truly make sense to replace whole heating and cooling units in buildings with, that are severely underutilized based on the number of scholars that we have? By comparison, board members, Rankin County School District has 28 schools that they operate, 28. And they serve just over 18,000 scholars. Now, that's just one school district. We can look at several others. That's just one school district that's right near us. And by comparison, we're maintaining 51 or 50-plus school buildings for an enrollment size that's just at 18,000. And by the way, now, not by much, but Rankin County is, has more scholars than Jackson Public Schools. We're operating almost double the size, double the number of schools, and serving a slightly smaller enrollment size of scholars. Board members, we brought to you a proposal to raise classified staff salaries, and unanimously you supported that. And so we were able to raise the compensation for our classified team members to include our HVAC and plumbing and electrical and carpentry and all those folks who helped to keep our buildings maintained. Still, we are challenged in maintaining the team because they are in such high demand. Maintaining the folks who can help us to get our systems back online, who have some knowledge of these aging systems and how to work with them to keep them running just a little while We just spent, as an emergency, and I know this is before the board again today, as an emergency purchase, we just spent over 200, well, actually $270,000 purchasing repairs or making repairs and purchasing units to try to help cool our buildings. We've also enlisted the support of several outside heating and cooling contractors, paying them more than $700,000 in labor and repair parts for these aging buildings that continue to fail us. As I said earlier, I continue to hear from parents. As I understand it, I believe there are some folks here tonight who have comments about heating or about cooling. We continue to hear from scholars. We've gotten calls from the Mississippi Department of Education. They are concerned as well. We're concerned. I get texts every morning, every morning, about buildings that are not cooling, from team members who are drastically trying to determine what we can do to fix the building or to move scholars from one room to another, or to move scholars to another building and co-locate someplace else while we try to get the part in or get some portable units in to cool buildings. Thankfully, we've got partners like Jackson State University, who are willing, at the drop of a dime, to allow us to bring in our entire ninth grade class at Jim Hill High School for two days last week. At no cost to us, no real questions asked, just how can we help? They were able to support us in that way. And I'm sure there are others who would be willing to support us in that way. So I'm going on, and I should also name also the Heinz County Human Resource Agency, who took in our entire school of precares from Van Winkle into their facility. I believe they too were displaced for two days last week. And so I'll wrap with this, board members. I, you know, this is weighing heavily on my heart. I know that we've got a board of folks who care deeply about our scholars and our team members and communities and want to make the right decisions. I wanted to share a little bit more of the context of what's happening. I promise you, this team is not sitting on their hands ignoring the challenges in our buildings. No, we did not wait until the start of school to address failing systems. There were systems that were working in June and not working as of a day or so before the start of school. There were systems that were working on Friday and were not working on Monday. So again, I say to you, I am not, we are not, sitting on our hands waiting on things to fall apart. Your superintendent worked alongside many others to install portable air conditioners at a school. What do I know about that? Not much. But I was cutting cardboard to get the units installed because we brought in hundreds of portable units. This issue is not one that will go away, and it's going to require us to make some huge and very difficult decisions. But I promise you, the decisions will be tough, but life is tough today. So I just urge us to, we will be coming, let me say this, we will be coming to you, board members, and before you, out to community to talk in earnest and with specifics about schools that we simply cannot continue to operate for a number of reasons. Not the least of which is we can't keep our scholars and team members in spaces that are not conducive to learning. And so I welcome any questions you have about these comments. I hate that I'm having to have this conversation on this first board meeting after the start of the school year with so much good that's happening in Jackson Public Schools. It's incredible how much good is happening in this district. But this issue has is sapping energy throughout the district. And if we don't arrest it, it could have reverberating effects on our scholars. With that, Mrs. Hilliard, I'll pause and see if there are any questions or reactions to what I've shared.
Thank you, Dr. Green, for that very thorough update. Board members, are there questions, comments? Okay. Mitch?
Yeah, I mean, I just had kind of a follow-on to getting into the schools and to seeing all the amazing stuff, getting to meet staffers that I, you know, that I haven't met. It's been both really encouraging and, to your point, and in certain places, deeply disheartening, or you just feel for the administrators and the teachers and the kids that are in those schools. Do we have an update? This may be the right time to talk about it, and maybe something we could take up on almost the next agenda item, but do we have an update on the number of schools in a snapshot where we're dealing with significant, what I would call significant HVAC issues, where we're not talking about like, hey, this one classroom's out, but we're talking about, hey, the hall's out? Do we have that? Can we get a picture for how widespread the issue is?
So I can provide to you, I can provide to you a listing of the schools. The challenge is that they're up and down.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
There are some schools that we see pretty consistently. Most of our high schools, we see consistently on a text or email. Um, most of our high schools, we see consistently, um, on a text or, or email or something, um, throughout the week. Provide Jim Hill and even now in the elementary building where Jim Hill has been relocated in order to do the major work on Jim Hill's building. Yeah, and, and sadly, uh, and, and just full disclosure, even in schools like Callaway and Forest Hill, where we've had some pretty major work done, we've not had the staffing to help to maintain those systems. And so we're having to go back and prop some of them up as well. They're not in as bad a shape, but there's some major issues, even in, um, schools where we've done some, um, some major work. So, uh, I can give you school by school. They're, 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 they're volatile, so they're infragile, and so back and forth. There are some schools where a new chiller has been able to stabilize. But it's, it's, it's incredible that the texts and then the follow-up and the responses of what's needed for these systems. It's incredible. And what it comes down to is the vast majority of them, again, and we're, we're talking fifty-plus schools, the vast majority of them have systems that are well beyond their life expectancy. And so we're going to have to continue to spend dollars to, to prop them up. Should we do that in all of those buildings? That just doesn't make sense. Not to mention the fact that this is the kind of work that you have to take off the school offline in order to do the work. I'm sorry, I should also name that, um, oftentimes when we talk about the systems, it's as though there's a system in a school. Most of our schools have individual, not most, many of our schools have individual AC systems per classroom. So you can imagine our team members having to go from system to system to system within a building to bring that building back online.
Are the, mm, the other units that, that you are bringing in, are they sufficient? Are they helpful?
Uh, sometimes. These portable units, um, you know, one, if they're not, so the work that I was doing that I thought I was doing something, um, if, if you don't really seal the window, then that hot air is seeping in and any cool air is seeping out. It's just not going to be as effective to, to cool the room. Um, obviously, it's better than without, but is it truly cooled to a comfortable temperature? Um, not always. And not to mention, some of the rooms are just large rooms, so they, uh, I've seen where we've, we have in some rooms multiple portable units. And these are the types of units that are on the floor and vented out of the window or vented up into the ceiling.
I'd just like to, um, add, you know, uh, to what Mr. McGuffey was saying, you know, my visits last week into the classrooms, um, into the buildings was very, very encouraging because I saw a lot of the teachers as well as the students that were, um, pushing through. You know, even if they did have challenges, they were making it work. They were, you know, they had workarounds. And obviously, that is something, you know, you want, don't want them to have to concern you to sustain for an entire semester, but they were, it was encouraging to see that they were still positive, still hopeful and, you know, just like, Doc, just give us some air, you know, that kind of thing. And so, um, you know, doing the best that we can. I just appreciate, you know, the comments on tonight for you to share the gravity of what we're dealing with so that we know what we're looking at moving forward because it is some difficult situations. We have, um, some of our, especially middle schools, where some of them are completely top-notch, like brand-new buildings, and then we have some that are piecemealing a building together, and I think all of our students deserve the top-notch. And so regardless of, you know, a- and I, and I understand this community, I do, you know, but some stuff, we have to look at the, the, the whole of the body. I love our entire, um, motto, "One district, one direction, marching towards excellence." So therefore, these are one body of students. All of them deserve the best, the best that we can give them. And so if that means moving and relocating them to different buildings to continue to give them their best with those best teachers, like, like what I've seen in these classrooms, then we might have to physically do that, um, you know, and I just would like for community to be prepared, just to be prepared in your mind that you want your students to have the best, and we want to give them the best. And sometimes that means it may not be in the physical space that they were once in.
I'm, I really appreciate, um, Mrs. Thompson, you naming that about staff, and, uh, I don't think I said enough about that, so I want to say another word on it. Um, you're absolutely right. Team members, so one, they're right to lift up the concern because it is a concern, and they're advocating for themselves, for their own health and safety, but as well for the scholars, so absolutely right. And they're pushing through. Folks are fanning themselves and teaching, and they're doing the thing and, and drinking water and teaching. They're also fanning themselves and still cleaning floors, cooking in the kitchens. And that I really want to, to stress. We, we walked into a couple of kitchens and it was, I, I had to tell the, the principals, we, we can't continue with this. We can't continue cooking. We've got to have some sack lunches or something for these babies. This is not safe. But our team members have been willing to push through. And so huge kudos to them for their patience and resilience and all that, but we can't see that as a pass to not do what we got to do.
That's right. Are there other comments, questions? Again, we want to say thanks to superintendent and all of team members, uh, all of the workers who are, we know, doing their very best to make things great, and we do appreciate that. I think the more, uh, communication that, uh, is provided for the public, I think that's, that will help.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. And, um, Mrs. Hilliard, that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Do we have any participation or public comment? Community members who would like to make?
Board members, we have two persons who've signed up to address you this afternoon. The first person is Joshua Strong, who would like to address you regarding introduction and invitation to build a good working relationship with JPS.
Good evening to Dr. Green and to the members of the board. My name is Joshua Strong, and I am the Executive Vice President for the Jackson Federation of Teachers, Parent Professionals, and School-Related Personnel. Just wanted to introduce myself and tell you that the president and I are looking forward to talking with you and with creating a good, positive working relationship with you because we know that good, regular communication is going to help all of us in the long run. Thank you for your time.
Next is Ebony P. Rice, um, who wants to address you, introduce myself as the new JFT Union President.
Good evening, uh, Dr. Green and board members. Um, I would like to say it's an honor to be here and I appreciate you all allowing us to speak. But yes, I would like to introduce myself. My name is Ebony P. Rice. I'm the newly-elected, uh, president for the Jackson Federation of Teachers. And first, if you would allow me, I would just like to pause, Dr. Green, and say thank you for your honesty and transparency in regards to the issue with the, um, the heating and cooling. Um, I greatly appreciate that, and just your approach to it was very respectable and very admirable. And it also helped me now that I have answers. I can give answers to my members and let them know what's going on with that. But just very quickly, um, just a really be, gr- brief background, born and raised in Chicago. Uh, my mom was a teacher with Chicago Public Schools for thirty-five years. Fast forward, uh, I live, been living here in Jackson for several years, and I have two children who are products of Jackson Public Schools. Uh, one, my son graduated from Murrah last year, um, and he's now going into his second year at Bellhaven to be an educator. And, um, did I say Murrah? He graduated from Callaway. I'm sorry. Sorry. And my daughter, she graduated from Murrah this year, and she just started her first year at Millsaps. So I definitely have love and appreciation for JPS. Yeah, they, they always like to compete against each other. So, um, anyway, very quickly, um, I just wanted to let everyone know what I stand for. Um, there are three office norms that I established for my staff. Respect, communication, and teamwork. And those are some of the principles, principles that I live by personally and professionally. Um, and that is my desire as JFT president to work with JPS along those terms of respect, communication, and teamwork, and I thank you guys very much.
Or you can, if there are questions, comments, or individuals who want to speak at a board meeting, you are to email your requests to RozWilliams@Jackson.K12.MS.us no later than 4:00 PM the day of the meeting or appear in person in the boardroom no later than 5:15 the day of the meeting. We get, um, if anyone signs up before we, before we get started, just want to set the expectations for those that are speaking. Next, we have information items, uh, information items. Emergency declaration due to the failure of HVAC. Dr. Green?
Yes, ma'am. I'll take this item. Um, we're, again, just providing for your information, a little bit of, for your information, a little bit of information about the, uh, emergency declaration, um, that, uh, I've issued as a result of the failure of our HVAC systems. This recommendation is, uh, made so that portable air conditioning units can be purchased, um, for various school locations, um, throughout the district. A total of five hundred were purchased. And as well, there's HVAC equipment, um, that was installed in, um, in inoperable classrooms or classrooms with inoperable systems. Um, the installation of the, of the portable units would relieve some of the, um, instructional, uh, staff and, um, and the scholars and the, and the district personnel to resolve some issues, um, until a more formal and, um, uh, permanent resolve of those issues are, are provided. So, um, I've approved the emergency declaration. It was presented by, uh, Earl Burke, our COO, Chief Operating Officer, um, for the purchase of the air conditioning unit and, and the additional work, um, that was needed. Originally, uh, it was declared that two-hundred-and-fifty portable air conditioning units would be needed. However, um, as we continue to work and of course during this record heat and our systems, um, in many cases just not shutting off, they've been running consistently to try to keep up with the, with the temperatures. It's been determined that an additional two-hundred-and-fifty units were needed and so, for a total of five hundred, um, temporary units. And we've been able to, uh, place them as needed and to move them around within a building and perhaps even at, from time to time to other buildings where, um, those systems have gone down and they've been more volatile, um, in their, in their operation. Just to note, the Office of Finance, Finance and Operations, uh, recommendation is an adherence to commitment number five, um, where we're trying to maintain a culture of accountability and excellence, um, and also just safeguarding our funds, um, through the most intentional and, um, thoughtful use of funds and addressing some of the issues that we have. I'll see if there are any questions about this at this point.
The only question I had is, what's the, what's the feel for, do we feel like this is the upper bounds of what we're, of what we expect? Do we expect to do this again in a month? You know, that's, that's the only question I had.
Our, our best expectation at this point is that we've got the units, the portable units that we need, and we may have to, again, shift them from one class to another. Unfortunately, fortunately, unfortunately, our windows are such in, in many of our classrooms where we actually had to remove a pane, a window pane, in order to secure these, uh, portables in that room, and so there won't be a ton of movement back and forth. But for where there are windows that slide up and down and we could, uh, install them and remove them fairly quickly, those are ones that might be utilized, uh, in another place. We, we're continuing to utilize our internal and, uh, contracted services to, um, try to get, where we can, get the regular systems, um, running again. And again, as the weather cools or when we have a break in the heat, um, we see those as opportunities for them to take a breather and, and, and likely come back. We've also got situations, excuse me, where we've had to order parts and the parts, we couldn't get them immediately, and so those cooling units have, have given us a little bit of, uh, leeway to get parts in and get them installed. All that to say, we don't anticipate needing more units, um, and are hopeful that these will allow us to continue to move back and forth, at least through the season, in, in addressing the cooling units, cooling needs.
I, I'd like to say, I actually do have one more question, and, and that was just about supply chain. Do we have, I mean, have, we've already gotten two-hundred-and-fifty units in. We're going to be able to get two-hundred-and-fifty units to us?
We've gotten all in. We, we, we placed them in two separate orders, um, but we've gotten them all in. And, and are they all deployed at this point? All but twenty-five are deployed.
Great. Sad and good.
Right. Kind of sad that we needed four-hundred-and-seventy-five of them, but... Kind of sad that we needed 475 of them, but. Any other questions, board members?
Good evening, board members. Good evening, everyone. I apologize for being late and although it was good to be able to call in and hear Dr. Green's update and also our public comments. So let's hear your thank you for getting the meeting started and we'll pick up right where you left off.
You're so welcome.
So next, we'll move on to our information action items. And this is a request to approve the Mississippi Employer Assisted Housing Teacher Program. Ms. Lyons, our Executive Director of Human Resources, will present this information.
Great evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Green, Board President, CIVAC, members of the board. The loan agreement before you is between the Mississippi Department of Education in conjunction with Fannie Mae and the teacher listed in board material. Maximum loan amount up to $6,000 is available to an eligible teacher to assist in paying the closing cost of the home and the teacher must render three years of service to the district. Based on this information, the Office of Human Resources is recommending approval of the Mississippi Employer Assisted Housing Teacher Program Loan Agreement for a teacher at Blackburn Middle School.
Thank you, Mrs. Lyons. Board members, are there any questions? I have a question, Mrs. Lyons. Do we ever have instances where a teacher is interested in the down payment assistance program but does not qualify for a mortgage?
We have not, we have not had that. Of course, this agreement is between MDE and the teacher, so MDE may have that information, but we will not.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, hearing no other questions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Figgers has moved. Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Lyons. Next, we have the request to approve an amended job description for a project director for school-based mental health grant. Ms. Amanda Thomas, our Executive Director of Climate and Wellness, will present this information.
Good evening, Dr. CIVAC, Board of Trustees, Dr. Green. The administration presents to you for approval a review of an amended job description for a project director for the school-based mental health grant. The rationale for this is to align the description of the school-based mental health project director with that of similar director positions within the district. Within your board material, you did receive a job description with revisions to provide a more comprehensive listing of the duties and responsibilities for that position, with specific changes being the number of days, the qualifications added, additional tasks and essential functions, as well as the salary range. Just for a point of clarification, this grant was awarded and the board approved it in February, actually February 24th, board meeting. The total amount awarded for this grant was $2.7 million to be used for a span of five years.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Board members, are there any additional questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
Second.
Mrs. Hilliard has moved. Mr. McGuffey has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Next, we have the request to approve the agreement between AmeriCorps and Jackson Public Schools. Dr. Samusia Stokes, our Executive Director of Office Innovation Innovative Strategy, will present this information.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To President CIVAC, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Green, and our JPS community. The administration represents, presents the review of the project agreement with Reading and Math Incorporated, a division of AmeriCorps. AmeriCorps is a national service program that engages people in a commitment to service and meeting the needs of their local communities. Reading and Math Corps Incorporated will provide Jackson Public School District with 30 service members as reading and math tutors in selected elementary and middle schools through this agreement. Reading and Math Corps will play a critical role in elementary and middle schools to accelerate learning. Reading Corps serves students in grades K through 3, one-on-one, or in pairs for 20 minutes daily. Math Corps serves students in grades 4 through 8 in groups of 2 to 3 for 90 minutes a week. Specifically, these tutors will work with the student who struggled to meet state requirements on the third grade gate exam and will support students preparing to take the third grade gate during the 2023-2024 school year. The tutors will be trained in best practices and will provide additional support to increase reading and math performance. AmeriCorps' overall target was to serve a minimum of 506 students, with 126 of Math Corps students exceeding the target growth and 101 Reading Corps students exceeding target growth. In addition, the goal was to recruit 21 Math Corps and 10 Math Reading Corps tutors. Analyzing the data based on the end-of-year data report that you received, 558 students were served in math and 23 tutors were served. We can measure growth if students have at least 12 weeks of tutoring and two-star math scores entered. Of those students served, 347 received at least 12 weeks of tutoring and had at least two-star scores. Of these 347 students, 45% of them, or 154 students, exceeded the target growth. We surpassed our expectations of 126 students exceeding target growth. 202 students served in reading and we had 13 tutors recruited. We can measure growth if students have at least six weeks of progress monitoring. Of those students served, 187 received at least six weeks of tutoring. Of these 187, 78% or 145 of them exceeded targeted growth. We surpassed our expectations of 101 Reading Corps students exceeding target growth. Most students exceeded the program's target growth, which means that while they were receiving support, the students were growing at a rate exceeding one year's worth of learning. Again, that is 78% of Reading Corps and 45% for Math Corps respectively. The Calog Foundation selected the program after the district's careful review of the program's reading and math corps' success and outcomes. The Calog Foundation will fund this project. The schools selected to participate in the program were identified utilizing statewide and district-wide math and reading assessment data to ensure outcomes for all students, particularly those from marginalized communities. The selected schools included students enrolled in grades K through 8. They include Blackburn, Boyd, Clausell, Dawson, Johnson, Key, Marshall, North Jackson, Rains, Shirley, Smith, Sykes, Timberlawn, Walton, and Wilkins respectively. As for JPS involvement required for the recruitment of corps members, the AMPAC team does all the hiring and provides toolkits for school sites if they would like to promote programming within their buildings. Additionally, school administrators may refer candidates to any available AMPAC positions. The agreement states that Jackson Public Schools must provide an internal coach-site supervisor. And as it relates to the costs covered, the internal coach role is an in-kind donation. This is the common structure of AMPAC programs in all schools served across the country. And for Jackson Public Schools, AmeriCorps funding and the match funding from the Calog Foundation cover 100% of the 31K cost for each tutor. As for other school improvement sites in the middle school division considered for the program, the AMPAC teams conferred with the assistant superintendents on recommended placements for the 2023-2024 school year. Blackburn Middle School actively sought to continue the program for this year. Additionally, our very own Dr. Chanelo Evans is presently spearheading an effort to coordinate additional high-impact tutoring opportunities for the middle school division. Thank you for your leadership. I leave you with an anecdotal expression provided by the AMPAC Mississippi Math Corps Tutor, Mr. James Jordan. He states, "Nothing is more inspiring than seeing the smiling face of a student who just had their first aha moment. An aha moment is more than simply understanding a math equation or getting the correct answer to a problem. In these moments, students realize they are capable of more than they ever imagined and they gain the confidence to pursue more challenging lessons. Moments like these remind me why I began tutoring. Many thanks to Principal Joseph Collins and Math Corps Tutor, Mr. James Jordan, for participating in a testimonial video of a second year of implementing Math Corps at Boyd Elementary. Mr. Joseph Collins and Mr. James Jordan did an excellent job sharing their experiences, which were captured in the Jackson Public Schools' social media most recently. I invite you to watch the video at this time."
Actually, Dr. Stokes, we're not going to show it now, but folks have access to it.
Yes, sir. This concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Stokes. Board members, any questions or comments? A comment and a question. First, thank you for lifting up the investment of the WK Calog Foundation. As many of us know, without the foundation, we, board members, probably would not be here. They played an instrumental role in many aspects of our work over the last several years as we've rebounded from where we were. Second, we shared some really interesting and amazing data. I might have missed that, those data. Were those provided to the board in advance?
Yes, sir.
They were. I need to, I just need to get, I missed it. And so I just, I need to, let me just follow up with you afterwards because again, there was great data and I just missed it in the prep. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Board members, are there any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I so move.
Excellent. Second.
Mrs. Hilliard has moved. Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Stokes.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. Next, we will move on to the request to approve the instructional management system for the 2023-2024 school year. Dr. Smith will present this information. Our Executive Director of the Office of Teaching and Learning.
Good evening, President CIVAC, our Board Members, Dr. Green, to our JPS family. The administration is presenting for information action the approval of our instructional management system. Our instructional management system pretty much tells what we teach and how we teach it. And so from that, there was a board question around our coaching framework. So in your packet, you do have the instructional framework, our instructional management system, as well as our coaching framework. And so our instructional management system, again, it defines what we teach with our Mississippi College and Career Ready Standards. It also defines how we intervene to help students. It also talks about our cursive writing, cursive writing law as well, and we test in fifth grade. It also describes what each of us at AMPAC teaching and learning does down from the superintendent all the way down to our teachers and teacher assistants. And so from that, everybody needs a coach. That's prefaced by our superintendent, and so that's our mantra. And so with our coaching framework that you see in the middle of that packet and information, it talks about the different phases of our coaching. And so we start out with our identify phase where coaches and instructional curriculum leads come in. They observe teachers to determine what specific support. It's not enough to say schools need support. We have to define that support based off of what we've observed, so, and looking at their data and asking them questions around what type of support they need. From that, from phase two, then there's co-teaching, modeling, co-planning. We have four instructional protocols. It's in the back of that coaching framework that you have, it's 12 protocols and we only look at four. And so this year, we will be utilizing the other complementary protocols to help to build out collaborative lesson planning, collaborative walkthroughs, and feedback, as well as examining student work. And we do all that under the umbrella of role play. And so we utilize role play so that teachers can see how those instructional strategies, as well as those lessons should be demonstrated in the classroom. And so that's just a brief synopsis of what our coaching framework entails and we end with evaluation. And so when that evaluation process is reflective, we look at what we did, what worked, what didn't work, what should we maintain, and what should we do a little different to ensure that those effective practices are taking place in the classroom.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I appreciate the additional information on the coaching framework. Board members, are there any questions or comments? I do want to lift up the coaching again. I had the opportunity to visit a number of schools at the elementary, middle, and high school level this week and just the ethos of coaching is so visible in the school district from how our assistant superintendents work with principals to how our principals work with teachers to how instructional coaches in the room or, I forgot the name already, but I learned, what's the name of a special ed teacher who is in the room?
Oh, coach.
An inclusion teacher.
What was that?
The inclusion teacher.
Inclusion teacher. Yeah, I learned inclusion, all of it. It was just so evident. So again, appreciate the extra time and the addition of this to the instructional framework.
Okay. Doc, I just want to thank you for naming that. We're working really, really hard, one, to ensure that everybody understands coaching isn't just for the struggling teacher or the struggling principal. Michael Jordan has had a coach. Stephen Curry has a coach. The folks at the top of their game, they have coaches. So why wouldn't all of us have coaches? I have a coach, we all do. And so we're really trying to beat down that notion that only struggling folks have coaches so that we can all get better faster. And so I appreciate you lifting that up and helping us to kind of spread the word that this really is a good thing for all of us and ultimately for our children.
No, you're absolutely welcome, Dr. Green. And you know, Dr. Green was in all those, you know, he didn't get to pick and choose. He went to all of them. And so, you know, one of the things that he would do is he would go into the schools, he would say, let's get a newer teacher and let's get a veteran teacher. And one of the things that was wonderful to hear from one of your principals was it's great to get this feedback for what I consider my high performers, you know, and so they're seeking that feedback. And then the other thing you can see too, even is, you know, we've approved contracts for CT3 and other coaching. And you can see the implementation of it. You can even see, there was one principal I asked, I said, did you go through CT3 chain? Because I watched the interaction and I, you know, and you can see it. So I think we will see the results of that. I keep hearing about it in the upcoming accountability model and regardless, again, the ethos and spirit is there. So thank you. Board members, is there a motion to approve the instructional model?
I want to add, I just want to add that it was really good to see it in action myself. And it felt like everybody was on the same team and the team was trying to win. It wasn't like anybody was felt like, even some of the principals that stepped in and coached in the classroom, but they threw the ball right back to the teacher and she picked it right back up and right back to teaching. And it was just really, really good to see so that even the students can see that, you know, we're all working together. You know, nobody's trying to get you, get you, or make anybody feel any kind of way. It was just really, really good to see. I just enjoyed my visits on this past week and looking forward to more. And I love this booklet. This was really so like laid out nicely, really good.
Mrs. Thompson, that sounds like that may be a motion.
I move.
Great.
I second.
Mrs. Thompson has moved. Ms. Hilliard has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Smith, for your work on that. And of course, the broader team as well. Next, we have our favorite, I can't say favorite, one of our favorite requests to approve. This is the Legacy Scholar Grant with the Equal Justice Initiative. Attorney Harris, our General Counsel, will present this information.
Great evening, Board President, Dr. CIVAC, Board Member, Superintendent, Dr. Green. The Office of the General Counsel is recommending that the Jackson Public School District's Board of Trustees approve the Legacy Scholars Grant for, between the Equal Justice Initiative and the Jackson Public School District, for Forest Hill High School scholars to attend the Legacy Museum from enslavement to mass incarceration and the National Memorial for Peace and Justice in Montgomery, Alabama. The amount of this grant award is $4,500 and it will cover for 28 students and two chaperones to attend the museum. And they are going on October the 4th of 2023.
Thank you, Attorney Harris. Board members, any questions, comments? I'm going to use, yeah, go ahead, Mrs. Hilliard.
I'm sorry. Have you gotten any feedback on the schools that have?
We have. We're getting very positive feedback from the schools and I actually have a treat for you all. We have. We're getting very positive feedback from the schools, and I actually have a treat for you all at an upcoming board meeting on one of the grants that you recently approved after the scholars attend the museum. They will be coming to present to you all on their trip. So, coming soon.
Exciting. Thank you.
Can't wait for that. Board members, one of the things I was just going to say, again, tying it back to the school visits this week, it was in a high school, and this is first week of school, and the students were talking about Plessy versus Ferguson. And, you know, you had every student, I mean, a very engaged class, and they knew what the 13th Amendment was, and they knew what the case was about, and they, they drew through lines to the Brown case. And, you know, we have this body of work going on and continuing to seek funding for it. And I just want to lift up that there are places in America where the destruction of these spaces is taking place for our children, but not here. And so I want to lift up the leadership of this district, the commitment by this board to, to making these spaces for our scholars, and, and also remind us that it's something that we should never take for granted. So, thank you, Attorney Harris, for continuing to bring this forward and for, we look forward to the, the presentation. So with that, board members, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Mr. Figurs has moved. Mrs. Thompson has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have the request to approve the dropout, the annual dropout prevention plan and restructuring plans for Jackson Public School District. Mrs. Marshall Thomas will present this information. Our Assistant Superintendent for the High School Division.
All right. Great evening again. The administration presents for approval the district's annual dropout prevention plan and restructuring plans for the 2023-2024 school year. State law requires each school district to develop and implement an annual dropout prevention plan in each high school with a graduation rate below 85% to create a restructuring plan. And the plans must be approved by the district's local school board and posted on the district's website. And so we will share some additional information with you at this time about this year's dropout prevention plan. And presenting will be our dropout prevention coordinator, Mr. Merrick Walker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Green and Dr. Merrick, Ms. Thomas and Dr. Seaback, to the school board and to our JPS family that is here. I'm here. My name is Merrick Walker, dropout prevention director here at JPS, and I want to present some important information to you at this time as it pertains to our dropout prevention plan for this upcoming year. So, as you can see, our mission statement here, we prepare scholars to achieve globally and to contribute locally and to be fulfilled individually. And so as our next screen, as you can see here, our objective for this year is to provide an overview of the process used to develop the district's 2023-24 dropout prevention plan, to present and provide an overview of the district dropout prevention plan, to present and provide an overview of our restructuring plan and the planning process. And so as you see just briefly here, several of our commitments, a strong start, innovative teaching and learning, talented and empowered teams, joyful learning environments, a culture of accountability, and a culture of excellence. And so, as we see here, why do we have these plans? That's required by state law. Each school district shall implement its annual dropout prevention plan. The plan must be board-approved and posted, as Ms. Thomas had just said, on the website. And each high school with a graduation rate below 85% is required to develop this restructuring plan. And so representatives from feeder, middle schools should be included in this, and they are in this restructuring, uh, planning team, and this restructuring plan should be included within the district's dropout plan. And so we have here, what strategies must be in the district dropout plan? As we see, number one, what it says here, reducing the retention rates in grades kindergarten through second. Number two, targeting subgroups that need additional assistance to meet these graduation requirements, and then developing dropout recovery initiatives that focus on students ages 17 through 21 who drop out of school, who have dropped out of school. And then number four, addressing how students will transition to the home school district from the juvenile detention center. And so now I want to look at more critically our prevention goals. So number one, we want to reduce the retention rates in grades kindergarten through second grade. And so as you can see on bullets here, K through 12 students' retention rate will decrease from 6.7% to 5.4% by May of 2024. And our last year's goal was 5.5% to 4%. And then secondly, K through 12 student attendance rate, we want to increase from 91.6% to 93% by May of next year, '24. And our last year's goal was 91.2% to 93%. Now, this particular slide, important slide, so our target subgroups that need additional assistance to meet graduation requirements, all right? And we have several bullets here. So the first one, as we see here, JPS will decrease chronic absenteeism. And we know chronic absenteeism in a nutshell means if a student misses more than 10% of the school year. So we want to reduce, we want to decrease it by 2% points by May of next year, from 32.4% to 30.4%. Last year's goal was 28.4%. We have some, secondly, bullets, as you see, black and African-American, 32.6 to 30, and then students with disabilities, 32 to 30%. JPS will increase the ELA proficiency of at-risk students from 34.5 to 40% by May of next year, as evidenced by our MAAP. And last year's goal was 32.8%. So we met that goal, all right? That's a great thing. Secondly, after that, we see one that deals with math proficiency of at-risk JPS scholars. And so you can see on the PowerPoint from 32% to 40 by next year, evidenced by our MAAP. And we were, we were favored to reach that goal. Last year's goal was 29.7%. The last bullet on this particular slide, JPS will increase the graduation rate, all right, from 84.1% to 85% by May of next year. Now, you may notice, last year's goal was 85%. So if you kind of look at it, we only missed it by one point. And I think that's a very positive thing. We're, we're headed in an upward and a forward direction, and, and we're going to accomplish this. Now, some of the reasons as to why we missed it by this one point are a few reasons, such as home life situations, maybe clothing or housing, moving from home to home, things of that nature. Some was somewhat of low grades, and sometimes students may have gotten discouraged and may have experienced some sort of peer conflicts. But a large part was dealt with and centered largely around home life circumstances. All right. So our next slide, our dropout prevention goals. And so as you can see here, development of dropout recovery initiatives that focus on students ages 17 through 21 who dropped out of school, all right? And so I'm going to share these few bullet points here. So JPS, we will increase the reentry or reenrollment of our students ages 17 to 21 that dropped out. But we want to increase it. Our goal is to increase it by 3%. JPS will use, and these are some ways that we plan to strategically accomplish this goal. We're going to use our early warning system indicators to monitor and track students who may potentially be on that track of the possibility of dropping out. Some of those things include our REEP, as well as other virtual options, our options that we have at our disposal that may be used to help keep our scholars in school and becoming productive citizens. Our second bullet here, under that, JPS will provide students with an alternative option for traditional classroom setting, which I kind of got a little ahead of myself by mentioning the REEP and the virtual options. So I'll say that again. Part of our alternative options includes REEP and then virtual options to help facilitate that. Our other bullet here, JPS will decrease the dropout rate by 3.5% per year, and that is at a 13.6%. JPS will use the early warning system that has been set as an indicator to help monitor and track these students. We will provide the alternate option of routes outside of traditional classroom settings. And then we will provide additional options for students who may opt out of attending colleges and universities. So you can see our intent and heart and focus is to continue to do everything that we can to help parents and to help our scholars to achieve, to move forward, and become productive citizens. Number four, in our dropout prevention plan, so we address how students will transition to the home school district from the juvenile detention center. And so, as you see here in our, in our bullet, JPS will follow the state policy of this transitioning process 100%. We're going to follow that policy and the students from the juvenile center and helping them get back to the home school. Now, I want to add a little dilemma to this. We have at Hilly Young, our very own dropout prevention coordinator, Mr. Arthur Sutton. And so when a student is prepared to be released, Mr. Sutton meets with that student, the parents, the dropout prevention director, the principal, and so forth for a hearing to help this transition and to help the student, help the parent, help the school, the principals, and all that need to be involved in the transitional process. So I want to shift gears just a little. So quickly, we'll look at the restructuring plans. And I'll explain a little bit as, as what that has come about and why it is worded that way. So the restructuring plans must be based on the MBE-adapted Early Warning Systems, system that focuses on the ABC indicators, all right, of student engagement in school. And that ABC, school attendance, behavior, and the course performance. So as we look at the five-year graduation rate trends, and as you see the list of the schools, you see the various years, you can see the trends. If you focus in on '22, '23, we see the numbers that are there. We know that any school that, with graduation rate that was below 85 goes into the restructuring plan. And we've had some schools to come up. We have, we got some schools that are right there nearby. But the greater point is, and the greater vision is, that we are doing all that we can to continue to work together as a JPS family to get their graduation rate up. As you see here, this is a graph. As you can see the schools and, on this particular graph, as you can see the numbers and the trend of the numbers. On this particular slide here, graduation rates and the state goals by subgroups. And as you can see quite naturally, you see all, as it breaks down female, male, by the different ethnicities and so forth, economically disadvantaged, our homeless, students with disabilities, and then our English learners. And over at the end, you see the '24, '25 goal, you see the state percentage as well. So that information is there for you to see as well. Now, the dropout rate trends. And so you see we have our two categories, Mississippi, then we have our very own JPS. You see the various years. So as we move over to '22, '23, Mississippi was at 9%. Ours was at 14.1. If you look as well in '21, '22, we were 12.7. Now, obviously, these numbers are higher than Mississippi, and so that's part of the work that we're doing. We are, we are consistently and committed to working on these numbers, to drop these numbers. But what I do want to say, in spite of that, these numbers of '21, '22, and '23, '24, I mean, '22, '23 are less or lower than '20 and '21. So we take all the positives, that we can continue to move upward and forward. Secondly, a reason that helps to speak to the increase of these numbers is that waivers that we've had, waivers that we had, particularly COVID waivers that we have had to assist in this area have been expired, or we have, we have completed that and no longer have those. So that kind of speaks to why those numbers look the way that they do look. But we do have some positivity that it is lower than the previous segment of years. And again, we are committed and we are dedicated to continuing to reduce our dropout rate. So we see our restructuring plan, and I kind of mentioned it already, and, but it's here. Well, you can also see it as well. All schools below the 85% graduation rate are required to restructure. And you see the list of our schools there. All of the principals and the staff are working diligently to continue to help our students and help reduce that rate, and we're going to accomplish it. On this particular slide, feeder pattern leads, all right, and the overview of the restructuring planning process. And you see the schools, as well as those principals at those particular schools. So here's the process. So our first bullet, teams gather and gathered and reviewed the EWS, the Early Warning System data, got together, reviewed that. Secondly, the teams identified at least three indicators to focus upon to improve for the upcoming school year and built an action plan around each one of those indicators, all right? And so we see here, the team drafted a dropout prevention restructuring plan for the upcoming year. And as you can see, it describes the improvement actions, the timelines, the resources, the measures for success, and the monitoring process. Each school has a plan. And the high school and each feeder middle school. The high school and middle school principals may present the action plans to our school board meeting before the board approves. That's, you know, something that's optional, but it's there, and I wanted to share that as well. The team will discuss the action plans with the school staff before the school year begins. So lastly, I'm going to read the early warning systems, and then, of course, any questions or comments that you may have. So as we see here, the attendance, students who are chronically absent use 10% absentee rate to identify use ten percent absentee rate to identify that uh are at risk of dropping out. These that meet that are at risk of dropping out, based on the research. So a student is chronically absent if he or she misses ten percent or more of the school year. Eight, ten days in a hundred eighty-day school year. Behavior, students who have behavioral issues that are disrupting his or her learning patterns are considered as well as at risk for dropping out. And we are strategically working to help those students. And then lastly, course performance. These are the ABCs that were mentioned earlier. Students who are not performing at a C or better level in the core classes are at risk of dropping out. And we are working diligently as well to help those students to move up higher in their academic process. Alright, so that concludes this particular part. And if you have any questions or comments, we will do the very best that we can to answer them as accurately as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. Board members, are there any questions, comments? Um, Dr. Walker, um is there anything markedly different in this plan from last year's plan? And if so, could you just lift out the highlights? I, I know one is uh seems like it's gonna be the addition of the high schools that are below the eighty-five percent. Um, is there anything beyond that?
Uh, good question. Yes, so I would start there. The high schools that are, have not made it to the eighty-five percent, uh our restructuring plan is one of those things that uh we have. And uh Ms. Thomas, yes ma'am?
Um, so just in addition to what uh Mr. Walker just shared, last year we had um three schools that were in restructuring. This year, we have a total of six. So as you saw in the graduation rates, we had some of the schools who had met the eighty-five percent um benchmark dropped slightly below that benchmark. And so, we have six of the seven high schools. Murray is the only school that, right now, that has a grad rate above the eighty-five percent. And so he shared with you all that prior to um COVID, we were, we had an opportunity to use some of the COVID waivers. For example, exemptions from passing some of the state exams. And so because of those exemptions, a lot of our students were able to meet the graduation requirements. While of course, as the years progress, um those waivers have gone away. And so now those students are held accountable for meeting the full of our graduation requirements. And I think we've done a really, really great job of at least, we've only dropped point um from eighty-four point six to eighty-four point one. So I think that is really, really commendable.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas. Uh, I would agree. And so would it, would it be accurate? I'm sorry, I lost my page on it. Would it be accurate that, like, which years did we have the waivers?
The, the waivers were for nineteen, twenty, and twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
The goals were, but of course, you know, that, that when those students tested, it's still, you know, backs up a year.
There's a lag between those years and when the data are reported. So, so the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year represented the data from the last year of the waiver. Okay. So is it? So really, I mean, if you were to omit those outliers, for lack of a better term, you, that's, if we're looking at trend data, would that be a way to look at it? Cause one way to look at it is cross-sectionally, or just a snapshot of last year to this year. And if you were just to look at last year to this year, that, you know, we saw that slight decrease.
Right.
We just got the reason for that around the waivers. So what I'm asking is if we wanna look at a longer trend, which I think represents the full body of work that the district has put into um improvement on this indicator, would it, would an appropriate way to be used to look at, you know, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three? Is that?
That would be a great comparison. That would be a great comparison. And, and the same is dropout rate. If you, if you look at the dropout rate, you can tell that, you know, we saw a, a really um, a really uh an in, a decrease from twenty-twenty-one. It was seventeen point five, and then it just dropped to twelve point seven. And you'll see now that it started, you know, to just level out. Right now, we're at fourteen point one on the dropout rate. But which is still lower than where we were in um eighteen, nineteen, which was eighteen. So.
Right. So another question, getting into the plan, um not too far into it, but um there are wide ranges, particularly, you know, if we look at the, so Dr. Walker spent some time talking about chronic absenteeism. And even if you just look at the high schools, there are wide ranges in the chronic absentee rate.
Yes.
You know, from like eleven and a half percent to fifty percent.
Yes.
What accounts for that um in our high schools?
Um, we have um a, a, as you stated, a range of reasons why our students are chronically absent. So, one thing that we've seen, because of the sixty-three percent attendance rule, students, if they miss um a certain percent of the day, those students are counted absent. So if we have students that come in tardy, um especially in the high schools, if you come in after ten-thirty, you're, you're tardy for the day. I mean, you're absent for the day. And so oftentimes, you know, our students really don't understand the importance of getting to school on time and also early dismissals. So if you get a dismissal prior to a certain time, you may have been at school all day. But when, if you leave early, those students are also counted as absent. And so what we see is the differences in schools really having strong plans and communications with parents and students around. You know, today, if he get a dismissal, he'll be at absent, absence nom seven. You know, having those one-on-one conversations with students and parents. You'll see that occur in some schools where you don't see that in, in, in some of them. Additionally, home life situations also um attributed, and those are also geographical. We have students that may experience um food um issues with housing and food issues. And so when those things happen, clothing, students may not be able to have clean, clean clothing when they come to school. And of course, we know that those are concentrated in some areas, even within the city of Jackson.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Thank you, that's very helpful.
What, what is the um, the plan where, you know, on the target subgroups to meet the graduation requirement says, JPS will decrease chronic absenteeism for every students by two percent by May of twenty-twenty-four? What does that look like? I mean, how will we reach that goal?
So there are um in, inside of the school plans. And so if you notice that uh Mr. Walker shared that the EWS looks at three categories, attendance, behavior, and course performance. So inside of attendance, they have plans that will specifically address attendance in their feeder pattern. And one thing that we've seen is the attendance is, is geographical as well for that particular area. The, the absences for the elementary, middle, and high school students in a particular feeder mirrors one another. And that, that was really, really um unique thing to see. And so we did pull in the elementary schools and principals to help us also develop because really dra- um dropout prevention starts in pre-K. And so having those elementary principals at the table to help us develop early plans so that students could get a good, solid um foundation in coming to school each and every day. You know, when you're sick, you, just because, just because you got a little cold today, yeah, you can come on school, you got a little tummy ache, yep, come on to school. Parents understanding that even early on, not coming to school has a, a long-term impact. Um, so the plans that are listed in restructuring plans are individual things. But on a district level, we also have to address, what are we doing to address our subgroups? So what we've done is we've identified our EL scholars. We've identified our students with disabilities. We've also identified students that are um biracial. So if you notice, that's a subgroup as well. And so what do you, what do we do when we see a subgroup or a population of students that are impacting um a school's attendance data? That, one thing we did brought this year was the dean of students. So the dean of students is responsible for cultural things inside of their schools. So if you notice, and you're, you're tracking your data, you notice that um I have a pregnant teen, and she's not coming to school. As a dean of student, that is your responsibility to reach out, to find out what resources should be available to assist this scholar. If we have a student that may be, may be experiencing food or housing insecurities, as a dean of student and an administrative team, what do we do to put in place to support those scholars? So it's about really looking at individual scholars within a building and, and providing supports for them.
Can I just say thank you for that? Because uh I have a bad tendency, this is just a personal confession time, right? I have a bad tendency to look at numbers. I like reviewing numbers, I like trend lines, all that sort of thing, and to get lost in that a little bit. And so the only thing I wrote down on my page is when you look at a dropout rate that increases from twelve point seven percent to fourteen point one percent in a district that's around eighteen thousand students, you're actually talking about two hundred and seventy kids. Right? And so, I just wanna applaud, especially that last part where we're talking about, these are individual kids and individual schools.
Situations.
That we're looking at, how do we reach them? How do we keep them in school? How do we get them across the finish line on graduation? Because we all know, life outcomes change when you graduate. And so, um I, I just wanna, I, I just wanna say, that's, that's really encouraging to hear. And I just wanna continue to push y'all and uh to, to do that even more and more, to personalize these things and don't get lost in data sometimes because I, I'm bad about that myself. So, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, I totally agree with that, totally agree with that. Especially when you talk about certain areas in Jackson that are affected differently than, I mean, it, it, it is true, it's totally true. And if we can have that individualized approach to deal with that issue or that pocket of individuals, it helps, you know? Because they feel seen, heard, and addressed. Their concerns are addressed so that they can go to school.
I really appreciate um how you described the role of the dean of students. Um, that was a role that we approved this, over the past year in response to data that we saw in the schools. What are you, in your role as assistant superintendent of high schools, what are you doing to make sure those dean of students see themselves as um pivotal to student success along the lines of what you just described and not just responding to discipline issues in the school?
So one thing that we are actually requiring is the dean, are the dean of students serving as the coordinator for the early warning system teams in the buildings. And so, as part of that process, they meet bi-weekly. And what they do is look at individual student data. So what students are at the top tier or the top twenty-five percent in attendance, course performance, and behavior. And so what are the plans? So what does a plan look like for a scholar that right now is flagging in all three areas? And so that, that requires bringing in the parents, bringing in additional resources, bringing the teachers to the table. Is there a mentor? Is there a check-in, a checkout available for this particular scholar? If he's not at school today, oh, Mark didn't come to school today, who's gonna call him to see what's going on? It's about having those individualized plans available. And that's the role, that's one of the roles that the dean of students will serve um in the schools. It's serving as the coordinator for the EWS teams.
I'll just add to that. I'm, I'm really glad you all asked the questions, and I appreciate um Mrs. Marshall Thomas lifting up the role of the, the dean. We as a district, the, you, these are not new roles to the district, but they've been reimagined. And we're reigniting uh the roles across high schools and middles. And so we've gotta build a muscle, and we understand this. We've gotta build a muscle around what that role is, how others within the school, this school um site engage with the dean, but also how we uh across the district engage with the dean. And what are our expectations? And one of the things that I said to the deans when I met with them in a small group, just them, was don't allow yourselves to be seen as and treated as the warden in our schools. That's not what this role is. And so, you know, challenging them not to see themselves as such, and then not to be treated as such. Um, sure, they'll have to engage with and support around behaviors. Um, but we're also supporting them around instructional um and, and pedagogy and, and um supporting them in, in ways that they too can speak intelligently and help to thread the needle for some of the issues that we see in classroom in attendance and behavior that um, you know, could, could help to, help scholars to meet with greater success. So we, we as a sys- all that to say, we as a system are also having to shift and, and ensure that we position those deans appropriately and support them as newer team members.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Green, thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas, thank you, Dr. Walker.
Do we, do we still have attendance officers? Or is that in that role with the dean now?
There is.
That's.
Begin the mic.
Is, I'm sorry, that's who we are, dropout prevention attendance officers.
Oh, okay, attend, okay, that's what, okay, good. And um, and you mentioned following the state policy for transitioning those students from, from the juvenile detention center. What is that policy? What does that look like?
Um, the state requires um students that are transitioning from the detention center to have transition meetings. And a, a part of those transition meetings requires them to have goals. And so Mr. Sutton, who also serves as the dropout prevention coordinator for the Henley Young Patent um Detention Center, meets with the schools, along with the parents, the counselors, and the administrators when a student has been housed or detained at the detention center, to discuss their goals. These are their goals for the next sixty days. And after a sixty-day um period, he goes back and he checks in with the school to get an update on how well the students are progressing toward those goals. And um because he's housed there, he's also available to have one-on-one conversations with the youth court judge to talk about additional resources that may be available for, for, for those scholars as well.
One other question, is there some sort of transitioning like that for, if they go to the alternative school and back to their home school?
It's the same thing. We also have um transition meetings that occur when students return from um our, alternative school. And that's done by the counselor there at um, at Capital City, who meets with the principals and the counselors when the students return back to their home school.
What level, what if, what about the level of support from your, from the parents? Uh, do you meet resistance?
Well, we do sometimes, but because we do have those relationships with the youth court judge, we, we also have the supports that we need. When, when the judge says, this is a required meeting, that as a parent, you must attend. And so oftentimes, um, you know, and, and oftentimes, our parents are really, really supportive. They want their student to get back to, you know, regular school, get back to their normal, normal life after experiencing something like that.
Great engagement by the board. Thank you, um and thank you for the presentation. Board members, is there a motion to approve our dropout prevention plan for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four?
Motion. Second it.
Mr. Figgers has moved, Mr. McGuffey has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, next, we have the request to approve the agreement uh for educational services with the Heinz County Board of Supervisors for the Henley Young Patent Juvenile Justice Center. Uh, Mrs. Marshall Thomas will present this information.
You just finished talking about the detention center, huh? Okay, the administration recommends approval of the memorandum of agreement between the Jackson Public School District and the Heinz County Board of Supervisors for the Henley Young Patent Juvenile Justice Center for the provision of educational services to neglected, neglected, delinquent, and at-risk students in the Henley Young facility. And in accordance with um Mississippi policy, educational provisions are required for all compulsory school-aged students detained in a youth detention center. The district will provide educational services to include the required three hundred and thirty instructional minutes as determined by the Mississippi Department of Education for students for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four to all eligible and qualified children and youth involved and housed in the Heinz County Juvenile Justice Center.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall Thomas. Board members, are there any questions, comments? Um, I did have a question. So um I have had the opportunity to visit uh Henley Young Patent School, and um I know one of the requirements for class to occur is the attention, uh, excuse me, is the um presence of a youth care officer, um which is provided by, by the center. How often is class canceled um due to the absence of, of um staff that according to the agreement is agreed upon to be there?
Um, the youth care professionals um at the detention center are responsible for being in the classrooms with the detained- in the classrooms with the detainees and the teachers during instructional time. They have experienced an issue with staffing at the detention center. So, as a result, from March of 2023 through our summer programming is when we really saw a decrease in the inability for them to come up as frequently as they should. We actually had a meeting on yesterday with Judge Carlin Hicks, along with the county attorney, as well as some additional staff members, to address this concern coming into the 23-24 school year. And we met, well, they met with the sheriff, and the sheriff's office will provide additional staffing to the detention center to assist with providing supervision in each of our classrooms. And so, they are committing to providing four to six youth care professionals for the 23-24 school year, which is going to be a big help. We have four classes in addition to one intervention class, and so, having a youth care professional there in each of the classrooms is what's required, not only in the MOU, but also in state policy.
So, so, is, is, is this a, a, the accurate retelling what you just shared? So, in instances where the detention center is unable to provide a youth care professional, there will be staff provided by the sheriff's office, or is it all the same staff?
No, it's not the same staff. The, the sheriff department does not provide staffing to the detention center. This is in an additional staffing that the sheriff department will provide for the detention center. So, these will be additional staff members that will be there daily.
Is, is that in the agreement?
No, it's not in agreement. And I don't know if we can put that in agreement, because that's just a courtesy that the sheriff's office is providing to the detention center.
One of the reasons I'm, and if we need to sit down with the board of supervisors, we can, one of the reasons I'm harping on this, well, there are a few. One is, when, when I was at the center, there was a story that was shared by our principal about how, you know, for many of the students who were there, this is their last chance to show to the judge that they're committed to a plan, and it could be the difference in years in sentencing. And so, and then the county came here and asked us for land to build another detention, uh, not, the jail, the county jail, and it was a contentious vote on this board. And the county stood up and said, we will make sure that you have youth care officers, and it's in the agreement, but what I'm reading here is from March until June, that two or three days a week classes were canceled. So, if it's not in the agreement, I mean, what recourse do we have?
Let me also add that oftentimes, too, they were not allowed to come up because of disciplinary infractions in the pods. So, for example, if there was an altercation or some egregious act that occurred in the pod, they would not allow the pod to come up, or, or those pods to come up. And because of the lack of coverage in the pods, those infractions were, you know, compounded. And as a result, it impacted the students' ability to come up to the classrooms, because they were, you know, they were at odds. And so, you know, it still boils down to having youth care professionals there, not just for the school, but they also have to make sure that they're there, you know, at the center.
Yeah. Dr. Sevak, I, I appreciate the, the push, the challenge to us to better position ourselves in the agreement with, with Hines County. I, I don't, I don't know the way forward. We, we, we really do need an agreement with them. We can certainly, if, if the board is willing to perhaps consider a, a special call meeting, we could certainly go back and ask for stronger language in the agreement around this, that either they would provide or, or get some provision of additional staffing capacity, what have you, to ensure the consistent schooling of, of the scholars who are also detainees. I appreciate what Mrs. Marshall Thomas has said. I mean, sheriff's office probably is like, well, you're not going to bind me in this agreement with them, but still, we need something. So, I'm, I'm willing to, and we are willing to, to take it back and, and try to work through what that could look like if board members will be flexible and, and allow us to try to reschedule more quickly a, a meeting to bring an agreement back to you. I just don't know, I can't, I don't know sitting here what that would look like with them.
What is the, what is the deadline?
It's, 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 it's passed. The school has started. We, we should have had a, an agreement the start of the school year. One thing that I did put in the recommendation back to you, Dr. Sevak, was that we would approve this current MOU, go back and make provisions, and then present a revised MOU that includes the additional language after we sit down and come up with some additional strategies. There are two issues here. The first issue is, we actually have scholars there, and they're our kids. And so, not to have the agreement is also going to put them at a disadvantage. And secondly, we receive federal funding to operate the center that we've already received funding for.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we will be in violation there. So, those are two things. But I do agree with you that it's probably time to bring the board of supervisors on board to, to get some assistance with this.
Okay. What I'm hearing is, we, we need it. And it sounds like our students need it too. I do really want to push us to figure this out, because again, it's, you know, it, this is the last shot some of these students have, and, and so, you know, it feels like in some ways, again, we're being taken for granted. We're holding up our end of the bargain. We got principals down there, we got staff down, like, how many vacancies have we had down there?
None.
None. So, it doesn't feel like we're, it feels like our students are getting the raw end of the deal on this one, and, and so.
Can I add just a couple of thoughts that I at least want to, like, put on the table for, as we go back, right, and we start looking at additional, additional provisions or additional sort of requirements under any kind of MOU? I mean, one is, let's go out and meet directly with the sheriff's office. I understand that he may rightly not want to be bound by an MOU that, that we, that we reach with Hines County Board of Supervisors. Let's talk to him about how we get him to, to make that kind of a pledge. I mean, I've had the pleasure of meeting him a number of times, hearing him speak a number of times. He is exceedingly passionate about the outreach programs that he's put in place. This is another one of those opportunities, and for better or worse, he's an elected official, right? And so, he, this is a way to hang your hat on doing what you talk about. So, I would, I would sort of challenge us to, to go meet directly with him and see what we can get, you know, see what kind of concrete commitments we can get on that front. Because if, if one of our issues is staffing that's coming from the, the county side, and they're telling us we can provide additional staffing, then it, let's take it from two sources. I mean, let's take it from everybody, everywhere we can get it, right? And the other is just, I would ask, and I guess I'm probably asking Ms. Harris, to go in and look at, Dr. Sevak's question about what is, what is the district's recourse on projects where we are recipients of federal funding, where we've reached, where we've accepted funds under, under a, a working MOU with a county, and then they're the ones falling short that prevent us from actually providing the, the education, educational services that we're committing to, to provide? There may be something there for us to lean pretty hard.
Yeah, and in the MOU, it actually states that we can, we can cancel the, the agreement after thirty days, within thirty-day notice.
Yes. I'm thinking of something other than cancellation or, or revocation. I'm thinking of, of, of ways to lean hard on people. So, let's just look at it. Let's see what's there. It may be in, in the federal regs. It may, there's a couple of places where we may be able to go explore. I don't think that's necessary for today, because like we've said, this, this feels like something we got to do, but moving forward, I, I would sort of challenge us on those two fronts.
Gotcha. Thank you, Ms. McGuffey. Any additional questions or comments? All right, board members, is there a motion to approve the agreement?
So move.
Second it.
Mrs. Thompson has moved. Ms. McGuffey has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas, for your work on this. Next, we will move on to the request to agree, to approve the agreement between Triage Facility Consultants for Project Management Services and the Jackson Public School District. Mr. Burke will present this information.
President Sevak, board. Dr. Green, JPS family. The administration is presenting for information to, to award a consulting services agreement to Triage Facility Consultants LLC. This consulting services agreement authorizes Triage Facility Consultants to provide project management and support services for the ESER III, this is our elementary and secondary school research, uh, elementary, secondary schools, emergency relief funds, funded, funding architectural and engineering projects and other district projects as approved. This project management service agreement will assist the current JPS facilities operations staff in ensuring that ESER projects are completed on or before the September thirtieth, 2024 deadline for the procurement and final completion by the end of December 2024. Triage will take the lead on all ESER III projects and coordinating work with all architectural and design firms. Their scope of services will include providing a master schedule of all projects, reviewing specifications and drawings in various design phases, reviewing budgets, providing recommendations to value engineer projects, monitoring construction activities for all projects, and providing weekly and monthly reports to the administration and this board. This comes as, the selection of Triage came as the result of an RFQ for project management and services, RFQ 2302, which was issued February ninth. It finalized March first. We had two respondents, and based on reviews conducted in a panel evaluation, Triage was selected. Triage is a minority-owned company based in Flowood, Mississippi. They have extensive project management and facility management experience, and have worked with several school districts in the state.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
You're welcome.
Board members, are there any questions, comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve Triage Facility Consultants for Project Management Services?
Actually, move.
Second it.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Ms. McGuffey has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion, any nays? The motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve the preliminary monthly financial report. Ms. Burke.
Thank you, President Sevak. The administration recommends that the board approve the preliminary monthly financial report for the month ending July thirty-first, 2023. The preliminary monthly financial report contains the statements of fund balance, budget status report, bank reconciliation report, and district maintenance cash flow report. Highlights of the report are as follows. For the statement of fund balance section, for general funds, funds 1,000 through 1,999, referencing pages five and eight, the preliminary fund, ending fund balance as of Mar, of July thirty-first, 2023, was eighteen million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-four cents. The balance was approximately five point six million higher than our previous, our prior year's position at this time, that last, in 2022. These balances are preliminary because of the general ledger is not closed as of June thirtieth, 2023. That work continues. District maintenance revenues are higher than expenditures by approximately one point two million, and then sixteen section revenues at this time, which is fund eighteen forty. Year-to-date, we've collected about ten thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which is about one point one percent of what we've budgeted to collect in sixteen section. The special revenue section of your report, funds 2,000 through 2,999, these include our child nutrition, our titles, our Corona response funds, our IDA funds, and other special revenue funds in that 2,000 series. This fund contains, the child nutrition fund, twenty-two, twenty-one, ten, continues to have a significant balance. They're doing a really good job in child nutrition, apparently, and they're carrying a balance of about thirteen point seven million dollars. They have several pursorts out for equipment replacement, so that we do expect that fund to spend down some. In the titles, Corona, IDA, and other special revenue, special revenue funds, show right now a negative balance of eight point six million due to the timing of the drawdowns through Mississippi Department of Education. We do have some funds slated for drawdown, fund drawdowns are prepared and submitted by the twelfth of the following month, and we are preparing those drawdowns at this time. The negative balances are covered by fund eleven twenty, as a reminder, and other district funds until reimbursements are received. The budget status report section of your report, district maintenance fund eleven twenty, referenced on page fourteen, and all other funds except eleven twenty, referenced on page twenty-five, as of July thirty-first, 2023. We, I apologize, let me pause a second. You may have, if you have this executive summary page, I need to make a note. I just noticed while I was reviewing that the budgeted, we, we budgeted, to use fund balance, fifty, fifty-eight point four million. We've collected, we budgeted revenues to be collected of two hundred million, and we, in all other funds, we budgeted revenues to be collected, two hundred and sixteen, for a total budgeted revenues of four hundred and seventy million dollars. Actually, so far this, this year, through July thirty-first, we have actually used nine point four million in fund balance. We have collected seven point two million in revenues collected. We've expended in eleven, fund eleven twenty, six point eight million. We have, in all other funds, collected two point two million, but we've expended thirteen point eight. For total revenues collected, actual, so far this, this fiscal year, of nine point four versus a total budgeted expenditure of, expended of twenty point six million. So, I need to update those numbers for you, because somehow they didn't get into what was actually provided to you. Bank reconciliation report, as of July thirty-first, 2023, all bank reconciliations, as referenced on page thirty, thirty-one of your report, all bank reconc, all district funds are in board-approved, depositories and bank statements have been reconciled appropriately and properly. Cash flow section of your report, district maintenance, for district maintenance fund eleven twenty, as of July thirty-first, the ending cash balance was three point five million compared to five point six in July of 2022, thirty-seven point, thirty-seven point eight-three percent. Well, ultimately, this is a two million dollar decrease from the prior year. Just by way of answering a question that, that was provided, with this position is a little lower, two million lower, due to the fact that we're carrying a lot of federal funds. This is, this continues to be a structural issue related to districts taking federal funds. When we take those dollars, we recognize that we have to, to pay those funds out, then get reimbursed. And then structurally, though, the, the, the amounts may be temporary and different each time, that is a, a part of taking federal funds. So, we have to have a healthy fund balance to cover those costs until we get that money back. So, that has been a continuing trend, and will be a continuing trend moving forward. And the other KPIs, we don't really have any highlights, other than to let you know we're working through closing our fiscal year for June thirtieth of 2023. I'll take any comments, concerns, and/or criticisms.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burke. Board members, any questions, comments?
I just want to make sure I, I understand kind of what's driving that change in cash position. Is, is the idea essentially that because we have to front money and then submit for reimbursement, that we're sort of spending more aggressively, knowing that it's coming back? I mean, is there, is there a cherry on the back end of that, on the reimbursement, or is it just a decrease in position that we?
Well, it's just a decrease in position, depending on how much we, we spend a lot with ESER. We're trying to, to. ESER, we're trying to capitalize on this timeline and make sure we spend those funds quickly and accurately, and that is driving, it's driven, it just depends on how we're processing those things through, as pay apps come in for construction, as bills come in, we pay them. It just happened that this fiscal year, the lead for reimbursement was two million dollars less than maybe what it was last year.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Mr. Burke. Board members, is there a request to approve the monthly financial report?
So, moved.
Second.
Mr. McGuffey has moved, Mrs. Thompson has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, the motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda item for finance. All the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration, are there any further questions? Hearing none, Mr. Burke, I'll just say thank you for the information on the student activity accounts, that was the first time I've ever taken time to go through them like that, but what you shared was very helpful. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item for finance?
Motion.
Mr. McGuffey has moved, Ms. Figurs has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, the motion carries. Next, we have our consent agenda items general, all the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration, are there any further questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda general?
Motion.
Mr. McGuffey has moved, Mrs. Thompson has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. Next, we have the consent agenda items personnel, all the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously, and had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration, are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for personnel?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved, Mrs. Thompson has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Is there a consideration to hold, there is a consideration to hold an executive session, is there a motion to close the meeting to consider executive session?
So, move.
Second.
Mr. Figurs has moved, Ms. Hilliard has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays, the motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for a good evening.